Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I want to welcome everyone to our March 15 meeting. Please note, we do have one council member absent. Mr. Bucknigh is not present this evening. Hope everyone's having a great spring break. First on our agenda is items from council. We do have two items that are pre-planned to discuss, but is there any, before we do those, is there anything else? I think Ms. Scott had-
I'd like to pull D.3.
Pull D.3, okay. Is there anything else? Okay. Okay. And if you think of something while we're talking, obviously bring it up. We have two items previously requested for discussion. The first one is, Ms. Scott, would you like to start the discussion?
Well, I think, I can't speak for Councilman Alvarez, but I think both of us were trying to make sure that it was on the agenda, and my reasons for asking for it are to hear if there are things that perhaps we can do, because we heard lots of things we couldn't do. I wanted to hear if there were things we could do, not necessarily that we would, but are there things that we can do? And that was what I was hoping to hear a little bit more about.
And I appreciate the opportunity, Ms. Scott, to come back and talk about the issue again. I know you and I have had conversations since the last meeting, and you've shared some materials with me as well, some historical academic articles about panhandling ordinances and the possibilities of things that can be done. And what I did is I went through some of those articles, and I looked for opportunities where I think that actions by the city council might withstand judicial scrutiny. And I want to emphasize the word "might" because we're really talking here in the realm of things that have not yet been tested in court, and that makes lawyers nervous to say that something might withstand judicial scrutiny when courts haven't examined it yet. But there are, I think, a couple of areas where I would be willing to say the city can take action. One of them, and I appreciate Chief bringing me a copy of this tonight, this is the flyer that the police officers are handing out on the medians, and there is on the flyer, you know, that section of the transportation code that says it is against the transportation code to stand in the roadway to solicit, among other things, a contribution. And so certainly state law does give some authority for the police department to encourage people to not stand within the roadway for the purpose of soliciting or panhandling. There are a couple of other areas, too, where I think that I would be comfortable with the city adopting a very limited ordinance with the intent to control panhandling. One of them, it would be limited to commercial speech. Commercial speech being different than panhandling, when you're talking about an attempt to create a commercial transaction, buying and selling of either a good or a service. Within the roadway, you might see that in some cities, you'll see people step off the curb and squeeze you your windshield right quick in exchange for a couple of bucks. That becomes a commercial transaction. They're providing a service to you in exchange for money. Or they may be selling a newspaper, or a rosebud, or a Bible card, or something. They're giving you a product in exchange for some money. That commercial transaction can be regulated much more easily than a pure free speech situation. And so if the city council were interested in pursuing some sort of regulation of commercial activity within the roadway, I think that would potentially withstand judicial scrutiny. And then the final area where I would say there's probably room for some regulation is, I've heard described, you're about to interrupt me, aren't you?
No, go ahead.
He asked me to keep this short.
No, 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 no. No, please don't. Your responses.
Thank you.
Short, not the discussion.
The third area has to do with regulation of false pretenses. We hear about people standing on the street corner with a sign that says they're a disabled veteran when they might not actually be disabled or a veteran. And I think that that deceptive conduct is probably considered theft under the state penal code, and probably could be regulated as well. So those three very small areas, I think, are areas where the city could do something.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What about when some of these businesses have someone out there standing with a sign, 50 percent off?
Yeah, I think those kinds of signs are commercial activity, and those can be regulated in the roadway as well.
And our sign ordinance does not do that now. Those are non, they're not permanently affixed to anything. I mean, it's kind of like if you regulate those, you might as well regulate bumper stickers, I guess, on cars, I don't know. I've got some general comments and discussion if y'all want, I mean-
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under the regulation of false pretense, who would determine whether this person was telling the truth or not?
Yeah.
So, you know, you're going back to, you know, he said, she said.
I agree that it would be very difficult to enforce.
Well, along the same lines, if, let's say, we had an ordinance that prohibited panhandling, and the police went and issued a citation, what are your chances of collecting that on that fine? And that that would just stay open for years and years?
In my experience, as the municipal prosecutor and working with court, I think it would be very difficult to collect those citations.
Well, what's the prospect of signage what Mr. Jalapaska discussed about in prior meetings?
I think it is acceptable for the city to post a sign in the median stating that it is an offense to solicit in the roadway, or asking to give to a charitable organization instead of panhandlers. I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
Would that cover the other signs we were just now talking about, selling furniture and things like that?
Oh, I think that's a different question.
Different question, yeah, but I mean- Just when you said, put a sign that said-
Yes, I think if council wanted to amend the sign code to address those kinds of handheld signs, we could do that. In the past, when we've been amending the sign code, I've cautioned against that because it gets very difficult at that point to draw the distinction between what is a commercial sign and what is a panhandling sign. When you're writing it in an ordinance, as an attorney, I'm sure you're familiar with the difficulty in crafting that language.
But all these ordinances we're talking about, and all these things we can do, they still give you the ability to cite someone, penalize them, and they don't pay the penalty. So I'm not sure that is effective. What I can tell you, my observation is, and I feel like I'm in Panhandle Central, because they mostly hang around close around my small shop, because it does have high traffic there, that gentleman that's been holding up those signs says, please don't do this, instead donates or something worthwhile, I think has been effective. There's less of them there. And that's just a private individual informing the community what he believes to be correct.
Okay, I'll take that as an okay.
And he has that right of free speech as well.
It's interesting, this, and I don't guess I've seen it before, I knew that the PD was doing it, and I think it's a great idea, and I hope you continue. I just want to point out something. The 552.007, which you just read that, that is not the entire code, because I have the whole code, which I read again today. This says that, except that a person may stand in a roadway to solicit a charitable contribution if authorized to do so by the local authority, having jurisdiction over the roadway. The rest of it says that they have to be employees of that local jurisdiction. That's why the fire department can do that. That is state law. That is not our law. We cannot tell the fire department to not do that. The MDA, or is it MDA? Muscular District Association, a wonderful organization, successfully lobbied in Austin to get that exclusion set in state law. So I want to clear that up completely. We have no control over that. We cannot tell them not to do that, believe it or not. Now, there's not the fire department doing that. That's the fire association, I think it's safe to say. They do a wonderful job of it, but we can't tell them not to. Does that seem hypocritical? A little bit, you know? But call your state representative about it. We can't control that. I just want to put that one to bed. I hope, obviously, the people that'll call me and ask me about it and get angry are not going to watch this meeting and hear that. Is that fairly accurate to say? But I don't mean to criticize this flyer. This is a good, and it's very helpful, got some great information on it. I hope y'all keep doing that. Why can't, how about I do this? Couple of questions that I've been thinking, if y'all don't mind, and maybe Thomas could answer some of these. Why can't we, again, make them get a permit?
Because pure panhandling is not commercial speech.
Okay. As I think you've said already. Okay. And, you know, one city did a thing where restricted the time to cross the street. So I guess they got somebody really slow to walk across the street and said, okay, it took this many minutes, and if it takes any longer, we can cite you. And that was in Portland?
Portland, Maine.
Didn't hold up?
It did not. It was challenged and struck down.
Okay. We can't restrict the time spent on the medians. We just can't, is what you're saying.
That's right.
It would ultimately cause problems, okay? This concept, and another thing I see a lot of confusion in the public, this distinction between public and private property. Please understand, what happens on people's private property, that's, you know, if someone is doing something to you in Walmart parking lot, go call Walmart. It's not in the interest of their customers to have their customers being accosted in the parking lot. So, you know, my wife had an experience recently at Sam's, you know, and I'm sure the people at Sam's would not like to hear that their customers are being bothered by someone. So there's a big distinction between public and private property. And that kind of segues into, I've heard the term vagrancy and loitering.
Yes, sir.
Tell us about that. Is that against the law to loiter?
No. Loitering is, by definition, standing around in a place without a purpose, and as long as you're legally allowed to stand in that place, the fact that you don't have a purpose doesn't make it illegal. Loitering is not illegal unless it is trespassing on somebody's property where you're not allowed to be.
That's that public-private property thing.
Again, yes.
So, I mean, no one can just stand in my yard or my house. Ultimately, I can call and say, he's trespassing.
Right, that's trespassing.
But if he's on the sidewalk in front of my house, that trespassing issue doesn't quite stick, I guess.
Right.
Because it's public property.
That's right.
And then there's different kinds of public property. I know in some of my readings, historically, that's where people go to pontificate on issues. They go stand on a corner, or they go to the park and draw a crowd. That is their place to do that kind of thing, so. I went back, too, and I looked at this chart, y'all remember, Thomas put this together for us? Because I was concerned, what exactly have these other cities done? And I had to refamiliarize myself. Houston, San Antonio, Austin, and Corpus, most, all those are, if I'm reading this correctly, based upon location. Specific distance, like eight, Houston, you can't be within eight foot of an ATM machine. The interesting thing about all those is it makes me think of the word selective enforcement. So a citizen is standing somewhere, and one of these homeless, or whatever you want to call them, is within six feet, and you call the police, please come pick this guy up. Back to what Ms. Josephine said about whoever he said, she said. I guess we could arrest the guy if the policeman sees the person close enough. So this is a person with no ID, no real background, the very reasons that put him out there, him or her out there. We would take him, incarcerate him a day, let him out. Is it a misdemeanor, so it's a municipal court issue? Probably never see him again, never collect on it, turns into a warrant. So he's got a warrant out, maybe two, three years later, the guy would give the same name. You see where I'm getting at? I guess if the objective is to remove him, that would work, where that we really ever collected anything is, but there's a cost to that. There's a cost to incarcerate, a cost for an officer to deal with that, right? Okay. I'm just thinking out loud. Some of the other cities have some behavioral related, using obscene language. So if I get cussed out, or it says approaching solicity if intimidating, that's in San Antonio. So I would call the officer and say, well, he intimidated me. What would the officer do? Just, well, see, this is very difficult, and I would really be interested to see how much of this is enforced, because I got to tell you, Austin, when I go to Austin, they're everywhere. I see these violations constantly, and I go to Austin all the time.
San Antonio as well.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. I wish I had time to, I did talk to the city attorney in Corpus a couple of weeks ago. I don't recall if I asked him about, you know, the success of it, but-
But then, at the last meeting, Tommy Tucker left us something about Round Rock, where he said there's not a problem, and he left us their ordinance. You know, I don't know if anybody else read it.
I did. Where he says they pick them up and take them to Austin?
I don't remember reading that part.
Well, maybe I shouldn't have said that, but he gave it to us, and I believe that's what it says.
Well, and it talks about, this ordinance is based on distracting drivers, that soliciting is distraction to drivers, and it says it over and over and over. And as I was reading it, I thought, well, that's true, but there's an awful lot of things that distract drivers, and-
Yeah.
You know, so it-
That was the excuse for billboard regulation.
I mean, I've spent some time on this. I've looked, I'm not opposed to something that would solve the problem, but not put us at risk. I have received a message from someone that I don't know if it's real or not, that says they will contact the ACLU the minute we pass an ordinance. I can show that, I can share that with some of you. I meant to bring a copy of it and show you. I don't, it was on Facebook, so it may not even be a legitimate thing.
Well, that's a good point, because some of these recent ordinances, whether it's Round Rock or Corpus, they're fairly new, and they're just sitting there for a challenge in the court system. So to say that they were passed, and they're being enforced, and how come they're doing it? It's only because it's a matter of time before they go into court. Is that correct, Thomas? Possibly.
And they can afford more lawyer fees than we can. And I think a community effort, and people understanding what this is about, and if they feel charitable, that if they would donate to the homeless shelter, or the other wonderful institutions we have that are dealing with these problems, that we'd be better off. And like I said, just that one guy out there that's been making the headlines, practicing his right of free speech to say, these guys shouldn't, you know, don't, please don't do this, donate to a charity instead, that would help them. I think he's been more effective than you might consider. Go drive through some of those intersections, see if there are less of them now than there was a month ago.
And I draw some parallels between, particularly just encouraging the community not to give to panhandling, but to suggest or to tell them not to give to panhandling, you know, they can easily say, it's none of your business what I do. Just like, you know, I don't think it's in our best interest to limit someone's free speech, as we're being tried, being asked to do. So we're kind of caught.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm really racking my brain to find a way to, the sign issue that you brought up, Mr. Jalapaska, you know, of course, we've also tried to minimize sign clutter. On the specific high-profile intersection of Navarro and 463, so many people go through there. It's a nice, laid out with traffic islands and bricks, and it's attractive, and then people seem to be upset. That's where all the attention is focused. On Navarro specifically, in that center island, one sign, and I don't know what it would say, you know, we discourage panhandling, please donate to other charities, I don't know. Of course, I'm trying to visualize that intersection in my mind right now. I suppose if you just put two signs, one on each side, it may have a dramatic effect.
But then, if that's text dot right of way, it has to meet text dot specs, and you'd have to get a permit for text dot.
True, that's, you're right, yeah, that's not a city road. We'd have to go-
Is that right?
Oh, you're right.
Why don't you just get rid of the island?
I think the traffic safety benefit offsets any of that. I mean-
Just put some demarc, those markers, those poles that stand, you know, three feet off the ground. Get rid of the island, see what happens then.
No, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to do that. But again, you're right, that is text dot, you know, we don't control it, we have to go through them. I agree with you, Mr. Jalapaska, on one thing is, I prefer to see a populist movement where the citizens do what they did. Mr. Schumake, and he's been very visible and active in this, and I respect that, they took it upon themselves to go out and use that same freedom of speech to communicate, we don't like this, stop it. And it's, it has appeared to work. There are still some individuals out there, I know, I still see them. I don't know if the term legitimate homeless, as compared to some of these, you know, scammers, I think everybody's in agreement, there were some people there for the wrong reasons, taking advantage of Victorians. But those efforts appeared to have run off, some of them. So it seems to be calmed down. I don't know. Does anybody, can y'all think of, and this was your item, Jan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, I just wanted to have some discussion, and I have to add that I think that a lot of the organizations that help the homeless and help the disadvantaged in our community that have been trying for years to get attention have gotten some positive attention, and I think that's been a good thing of the conversations that we've had, that the communities had. And I just think, you know, that maybe it needs to be handled privately the way it is being handled, and if the discussion needs to happen again, it should happen again.
I even will go so far as to say that it, hesitant, but you know, recently, I had a conversation with the city manager about, we had somebody allegedly going door-to-door to collect for, was it Christ Kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's almost as if it's organized crime. It's the same groups, oh, well, we got busted on the street, let's go to door-to-door under false pretenses. That concerns me more, you know, because that's a one-on-one interaction with people's front door, and we've had some discussions-
But we require permits for door-to-door.
Yeah, we're actually been discussing that, and that's part of the food truck thing coming up, but I just wonder if it's the same group. I just want people to be cautious and safe. Anyway, I'm digressing, I know, so.
May I make one statement of clarification?
Sure.
If somebody is accosted, or harassed, or assaulted on private property, they should call the police department to complain. I mean, they can also have the right to talk to that private person about, they don't like that going on on private property, but then call the police.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, well, I know we're going to have, and I hope we have public comment, and welcome that. Please share your opinions, that's fine.
Well, and I guess we kind of need to hear the briefing on liability, too. I mean, if Thomas is about to tell us we have liability, then I may want to change what I'm thinking.
Yeah. That was Mr. Alvarez.
Well, you want to transition to that, ma'am?
Sure, it's similar.
And that was in response to some of our citizens making comments at the podium, that if we do not pass an ordinance, or take control of the situation and regulate it somehow, if there is a accident caused by cars, the panhandlers themselves, somehow that's going to fall back as a liability issue on the city, which I beg to disagree with that, but I'd ask Thomas to give us the legal version of that aspect of liability.
Thank you. And the brief answer is, no, the city would not be liable in the vast majority of those situations. Under the Texas Tort Claims Act, the way that a city is held liable for a tort is if we have taken some direct action by our employee, typically using a piece of motorized equipment that we own and are driving, actually using at the time. The kind of situation that many of the citizens were bringing up, where one citizen is doing harm to another citizen, the city doesn't have any role in that, and most likely would not be held liable. So while it is fair for them to say, we could be sued for it, you know, it's an old joke among lawyers that all you need to sue somebody is $60 on a typewriter. You don't have to have a just cause of action to sue somebody. But that's not the kind of situation that would cause me to warn city council, we need to change our conduct, change the way we conduct our business, just because we might be subject to a frivolous lawsuit. Those kinds of lawsuits, they'll come and they'll go without impacting the way we do our business, and they shouldn't impact the way we do our business.
No, I just want to, appreciate that point of clarification.
Okay, items from council. Is that enough on those two items? Are y'all want to? Okay. If not, I see no further communication. We'll go into citizens' communication, so anyone is welcome to come forward, and please state your name and address at the podium, and try to keep comments to five minutes out of respect for everyone, so everyone can have a chance.
My name's Tanya Gerloff. I live at 901 Mead Road, Victoria, Texas. Okay, I heard you say that Walmart parking lot, okay, I also know that there's a certain amount of the frontage road easement that is city. And if they're standing on city property, what good does it do for us to go to the Walmart manager?
Yeah, no, I said when they were on Walmart property. Yes, ma'am. I'm aware of that. I'm aware of where some of them stand.
And that's where they're standing.
Okay.
Is on city property.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. I've got a question. You know, I was looking the other day at the Walgreens, right there across from Walmart and Sam's and all that. If y'all noticed, they have that island right there, but they have beautiful hedges there. It beautifies that area. Y'all don't want to put guardrails up because it will not make it look nice? Think about maybe either shrinking the islands down a little bit, where it's very uncomfortable to stand on, or maybe even putting beautiful little hedges in that island to make it more pretty, and make the city beautiful, where we're not looking at, I'm sorry, panhandlers, whatever you want to call them. But I will say this much, I've done a lot of checking and a lot of checking on these that are holding up signs saying homeless and stuff, and they're collecting money. They're not homeless. Some of them, I know for a fact, have homes, okay? I pay my property taxes, I pay my sales tax, and I pay my IRS taxes off of my income. They're not paying taxes on all this. Why is that not against the law? If we're paying taxes on our money, how is it feasible that we're supposed to sit back and say, okay, well, we're paying for the, we're giving these guys money to help them out. They're not paying taxes, and yet it's not considered a business that they're getting this money. And if we do a garage sale, or an estate sale, we have to pay taxes. We're raising funds for ourselves. So that's something else I was wondering about. How come there's nothing under the law that says, okay, if they're going to be out there panhandling, there has to be a way to collect some money for the city, or something off of it? Because this is things that a lot of us have talked about, and are wondering, okay, what if all of us just quit paying our taxes because, oh, we don't feel like paying them? It's kind of, okay, well, do you understand what I'm saying on that aspect? It's like, why can't people feel safe in their city if we're paying our taxes? That's what we pay taxes for, is to be kept safe, and yet, at the same time, we need to do something to make it safe for us. We need to say, okay, either put a thinner island, put something to beautify the city, or find a way to say, okay, you guys are out there, we know who you are, we're going to find a way for you to have to pay for a certain amount in for what you're collecting out there. We know what they're making. We've been told by several of the guys. Kevin's been told, and I've been told by talking to several of them. They can clear anywhere from $200 to $750 a day, standing on a corner. That's more than some of us make in a month. So that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention. And some of these guys, I also know, need, how do I want to put it? They need a lot of medical help, yes, mental help and stuff, but standing on the corner isn't getting them that help. And as long as they're dealing with mental illnesses and stuff, and they're out on the corner, and some of those mental illnesses are very dangerous, there has to be a way to get them the help that they really need, without putting people in danger, because they go right back to that corner. And I don't think a $1,000 bond is an acceptable bond for pulling a knife on somebody, I'm sorry, out that same night. I'm sorry, that's just not, so. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring up some ideals of how to make it, make the mediums more feasible for the city to be streamlined or beautified, where we're not looking at panhandlers. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Farthing. I live at 643 FM 237 in Victoria, Texas. I, I'm not fully sure where she gets all of her information about how much money people are raking in. Most definitely around the holidays, that's a fair figure. But currently, at least five or six of the homeless people that I do speak to and feed on a regular basis are barely making the roughly about $23 that they need on a daily basis to feed themselves. And unfortunately, the witch hunt that is going on towards our homeless is really just starving people. It's not, it's not helping. And there's a lot of people who absolutely need medical help, and many of them who are homeless are denied by our, by our hospitals. When they go in and they try to get help, they're told they're not sick. There's, and these are, these are personal things that I've been told and talked to about these other problems, and they are absolutely a vast majority of problems. But I do not think that trying to forcibly remove panhandling is the best way to go about these problems, simply because all it really does is force people to recluse and force people to starve in, behind buildings, and it's about, and, I'm sorry. It is an unfortunate reality that many cities have tried to just not have to look at the homeless. And I feel like that's so much of what, what people are asking for, is to simply not have to look at it anymore, not to actually engage in helping the problems. And that's not everyone. But a lot of people who are severely angry about this specific thing, and about people who are, who are going through an act of desperation to have to ask for money simply to feed themselves or get their basic needs met. You see the bags that many of these people carry around, and they have all of their belongings in one place, and it's nothing. It's things that we throw away every day, and they're, they're starving. And what I've seen more than anything in the last two months of people actively, angrily trying to get rid of panhandling, is people having a really hard time just living, just surviving. And many of these people, especially the ones who are capable of working, are trying. They're trying so hard to get jobs, but it is extremely difficult to get hired, even if you have everything from the basis of interview skills to clean clothing to a place to shower. It's not easy to get a job at Walmart without all of the, all of the background of getting a job. And I've been trying with several people, and we finally got someone hired today. He starts work today, and it's wonderful, and we're getting him off the street. But it's, it's a long process, and it takes a lot of help. And our organizations in town are trying, but there's so many people, and it's such a vast thing that needs help. And it's especially difficult for men. We have a lot of help for women, but it's harder to help men. And it's, it's just a big multifaceted issue, and I think that worrying mostly about the panhandling is really just a way of saying, we just don't want to look at it anymore. We don't want to fix it. And that's, that I think is sad, and I think that we could set a precedent as, as a wonderful city, I love this city. I think that we could, instead of just trying to shove it under the rug and not look at it anymore, we could really actively make some strides to not, not criminalize homelessness, which is that people don't pay, they end up being incarcerated. It costs much more money in the long run to incarcerate people and use police time and sight, and, and just, it's nonsense, and people can't pay it, they can't get a job. It's, it's a terrible system in place, and I think that there are most definitely better ways. And I don't have all the answers, but I really don't think that actively trying to make it more difficult to panhandle is, is the best way to go about it. It's, it's very similar to how big cities have put spikes down so that people can't sleep on the ground. And I just think it's inhumane and wrong for our city. I think we could do better. Thank you.
Jennifer, what agency do you work with?
I actually don't work with an agency.
Just individual?
I'm just an individual, but I'm just trying my best to, you know, make a, make our city better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kim Pickens, 812 Life. And I would first like to thank city attorney and the members of city council for their time and attention to the matters that are affecting our homeless community here in Victoria. I would also like to thank the citizens of our town that are willing to stand up and discuss the issues that affect far too many people living in our city. Within the negative discussions on social media, there have been rays of light. There have been people who are connecting with those who have found themselves homeless and assisting them with getting the help they need for success, like the Jennas. There have been people who are volunteering with organizations that are on the front line, making a change. I would like to see this momentum continue. We need to identify gaps in needed services that are preventing people from achieving success. That means connecting organizations, churches, businesses, and individuals to find out what we have that can be better utilized. It also means creating new services to fill in the remaining gaps. How that happens is for people to come to the table for sharing and discussion. It takes compassion, understanding, and empathy to create real change. It will take time making those who find themselves in a situation of homelessness a priority. We are reaching out to people who are broken, people who find themselves simply surviving and not truly living. There are no easy fixes when helping people. There is no single answer that fits everyone's situation. It takes effort, heart, investments of time, and love to prove to people that they are worth being a part of life again. We need affordable housing options for our disabled and elderly populations to live safely. We need to address the over 740 youth who are identified currently as homeless, who are living with their families doubled up, on the street, or living in cars. This afternoon, I was in a conference call regarding ending veteran homelessness specifically, but there was a city in Idaho that is comparable to the size of our city, and they have essentially ended their veteran homelessness. And so I would like to propose that agencies and individuals who are passionate about ending homelessness in our area to become a part of the conversation and attend the next Victoria Area Homeless Coalition meeting, which is the whole purpose, is for people to come together and, and talk about these things. It will happen on March 31st at 8:30 a.m. We meet at Pine Street Community Center, 803 Pine Street. If you're not able to make that meeting, please email endpovertyvahc@gmail.com, and we will find an alternative time that works to meet and share. I also have created homeless resource maps that anyone can take if they see someone and they want to. I've published it on our Facebook page, the Victoria Area Homeless Coalition, and they're welcome to do that, so that way people can see an actual map. I've seen people that say, well, you know, it's that place, and it's at this address, but if I'm five miles away and I'm on foot, my guaranteed success of making it there is about slim and none. While I appreciate people telling people, oh, well, you can make it to Christ Kitchen, but I'm on foot, and I don't have money, and I don't know how to get there, and I don't have a clue, there's nothing wrong with actually putting somebody in your car and dropping them off, or making sure that we're ensuring people's success. There are a lot of people who have said a whole lot of the negative things, and I'm not really trying to address my detractors, because I really can honestly care less. But the majority of people do not understand, a lot of us who are not actually part of agencies, the magnificent people who are doing the work in the trenches, day in and day out, in Midcoast and Salvation Army and all these other places, I'm a volunteer, like a lot of the other people who are actually putting their own money and own time into actually walking out and helping people. I could sit here and I could tell you all these terrible things that have happened, but I'm going to tell you, I've made some of the best relationships and best friendships with people who didn't think they were worth a darn. And I've had so much success just being friends with people and ensuring that they get to their doctor's appointments, to their counseling appointments, that they've become housed. And that doesn't stop. You don't just drop somebody off at the door and say, well, good luck. It's about those relationships and building those things. And I invite all of you guys to be a part of that, and everybody who's here, so I appreciate your time.
Citizens' communication is still open?
Hi, my name is Brett Jones, and I live at 709 East Crestwood. You might recognize me as the Beast from Beauty and the Beast, or Jesus Christ in Godspell. And I bring up the theater because we, we call that place a safe and nurturing place. And I've always felt like Victoria is safe and nurturing. I've always felt like this is a town that's welcoming and open-hearted and generous. I don't just feel like it, I know it. I work at Midcoast Family Services every day as the chief of operations, and I get to see the very best in people. I get to see people give of their time and their resources every day to help our clients. What worries me about the, the idea of addressing panhandling in an ordinance is that I know that panhandling isn't the problem. Panhandling is simply a symptom of the problem. And when you treat symptoms, the problem becomes numb, and you can't address the real issue, what's really happening behind the scenes. I know that we have people who think that we're being fleeced, people from Houston. I've heard people say we have Romanian gypsies coming here to, to take our stuff. But I'm of the mind that if we are a safe and nurturing place, then people will want to come here because we'll take care of them. And I'm of the mind that taking care of people is a good thing. Whether they're, whether they're lying to me or not, I don't think that everyone really deserves help, but that's not what compassion is about. Compassion is really about putting yourself out there to help those that do need help. And if we help those that are in need, great. And if we help those that are not really deserving of our help, well, we still showed compassion, and that was good on us. I would also like to really preserve my right to panhandle. I've been very fortunate in my life. I'm, I'm born and raised here. My, my family goes back generations in Victoria, and I have really, really deep roots in this community. I love it. But there may come a day that I need to ask for help, and I want my right to ask for help protected by you. I want to be able to stand on a street corner, on the corner of Navarro and Rio Grande and Ben Jordan, wherever I am, and hold up a sign and say, please help me. I need that right preserved. When we look at limiting people's speech, I, I think that the outcome, when we look back through history, is always bad. There's no good way to limit speech. Sometimes it has to be done, and I do recognize that, but this isn't one of those times. These are the most vulnerable people among us. These are the people that we should be looking for ways to take care of. And I do also want to address the notion of, because I've heard it thrown around so many times, that you, when you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. When you teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime. But you know what? It takes a lot of time and resources to teach a man to fish. You've got to have somebody that already knows how to fish, to, to sit down and show him how to worm that hook and to cast right. It's not an easy thing to do to teach someone to fish, but it is easy to give someone a fish. And when you give someone a fish today, you fed them for today. And that's important. That matters. Now, I'm all for teaching people to fish. Believe me, I would love it if we had a line of people at our door at Midcoast saying, I want to teach people how to get a job. I want to teach people how to wash right, how to speak right, how to act right. But we don't have a lot of people beating our door down to show people how to fish. So until we do, I think we need to protect those people who need that fish that day, because it really is important to them. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Blanche Deleon, 236 Adcock Road, Victoria. And I have a little bit of something different to speak to the mayor and council today, and also the people attending today's council meeting. Some of you may know, but March is Texas History Month, and I'm here about Texas history. In about 1906, two citizens of Victoria donated to the Victoria Independent School District two relics of our history. One of them was Martin Deleon's sword, and the other one was a portrait of the colonial surveyor J.M.J. Carver Hall. And as some of you may know, these relics disappeared for some 50, 60 years and turned up at the Alamo after being loaned to the state in 1936 for the 100th centennial celebration of Texas. Some 50 years later, the sword was noticed to be in the Alamo, and Ignacio Diaz, who was the principal of One Lynn High, One Lynn School, went and wrangled that sword out of the hands of the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, and I can say that fondly because I am one, and brought that sword back to Victoria. But the portrait has been missing still. A well, author of a biography about J.M.J. Carver Hall had a artist recreate this portrait, and we're bringing it back to Victoria. It's not the original, but it certainly is very nice, and it's coming back this month in Texas History Month. So if someone would assist me and hand these out.
Officer Soto.
You may have already received this invitation. This invitation is to all the council members and anyone in Victoria who's interested in Texas history. This is an invitation to experience Victoria's past. We're working with Deleon Elementary School and also the family of Martin Deleon. We invite you to a special presentation in honor of the colonization of Victoria and also Texas History Month on Thursday, March 24th, at 1:30 at Deleon School, 1002 Santa Barbara. And if you are going to go, they, they need to count heads for the reception that they're going to throw. We have a very young J.M.J. Carver Hall, and actually, we have quite a pageant of students who are going to teach the lessons of how to survey, because J.M.J. Carver Hall was a surveyor. They're also going to have present members from the GLO, Austin, Texas, is coming down. They're going to teach these children about how land grants were established, how the land was measured in Varus, and also the letters of character that had to be supplied to get their land grant approved. They had to be of good moral character, and they had to have certain things. And also, they're going to write land grants that day out at Deleon School. So I'd like to open this invitation to anyone who would be interested in seeing our youngest members of our community present these lessons to this community. And also, Dr. Joseph Chance will be giving that portrait, OC, you're off the hook, because we were going to do this to the city, back to the V.I.S.D., so that portrait will be returned to V.I.S.D. on this date. So I invite you to come and see the kids. They've worked very hard, they're very cute, and they have top-notch costumes. We have the costume from the theater that has helped us dress these kids out. So please come and lend your support to Victoria's youngest citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Deleon. Real quick, though, so we have a mystery of a missing painting, is what I heard, too. That's interesting. Okay?
Yes, it was damaged. They believed it was in the basement of the Alamo. It was damaged, but he also looked very much like Sam Houston, so it was thought to be, you know, maybe that they mistakened it as Stephen F. Austin, and it was never displayed. It was damaged. I have a picture of it. It was, it was very heavily damaged. But an artist has now recreated that portrait, and it will be coming back to Victoria.
But the original is?
Still missing in action.
You have a picture of it?
Yes, I have a picture of it.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, don't distract me anymore with that. Anytime there's a mystery like that, I want to know what happened. Citizens' communication is still open, if anyone would like to come forward?
Hello, my name's Melissa Lyman. I live at 707 North Victoria Street. It's my first city council meeting. I'm hoping I'm speaking on a subject that's going to come up regarding city council meeting. I'm hoping I'm speaking on a subject that's going to come up regarding the recycling later. I'm rather shocked that there's no other recycling people speaking. I just want you to know how in favor I am of continuing either our current program or exploring options for a different company to assist us with recycling. I am an avid recycler, have been for 25 years since my kids did it in elementary school. We are a proud city of two schools that have received national recognition for their recycling efforts. Our city tries to be a steward of our surroundings, our environment, our image. I find it appalling that we would consider stopping recycling for the cost of a gallon of gas a month, a loaf of bread, a bottle of the water you're drinking. I cannot believe that there is no support. I am very disappointed, kind of in myself, for not speaking up sooner. And the only reason I came today, I was, I set my alarm for 4 o'clock to say, "Gosh, you need to go to that city council meeting and at least be present," because if you do not participate, you cannot complain. As with elections, as with the panhandling, everybody is entitled to their opinions. Mine is very important to me. The other idea is, we must teach our children and the importance of taking care of our environment and of the products that we use. And we must support the use of recycled items. I probably take it to an extreme where I shop, where I eat. I try to participate in places that use environmentally friendly recyclable, you know, take-homes, cups, plates. I think people in other cities across the nation do that. I'm sorry that Waste Management sees, you know, is not seeing a profit here. That's unfortunate, but I think it's more than the cost of the increase to me personally. And I just have a couple of questions that I must say I probably wasn't informed as I should have been before I came. Number one, what is going to be the cost from Waste Management if we cancel the recycling? What are our garbage fees going to rise to? That is a very important question. The other question I have is more of a business decision, and I have not read or I'm not familiar with, who approved the initial contract without any restrictions on the rise of the fees? That's common sense business. We do lots of, we all make bad decisions in our life. I'm guilty, just as anyone else. And we do with city, you know, with mowing, with trash, with road fixing, and there's no accountability. You know, things break down. I drive over roads that have been patched a week ago and that are already messed up. So, people do make mistakes. But in a city that prides itself on watching its budget, who dropped the ball here? And I know that it was discussed at the last meeting that that won't happen if we sign the contract again. I heard that it's in there, that you can only increase the fees so much at a time. But I do think it's important to identify how that happened, that we would have an unrestricted increase in our recycling fees. So, that's kind of where I stand. I'm a proud recycler. I bring my parents recyclables from the Lower Mission Valley Road, because there aren't any services in the county, and my mother looks forward to it every week. She saves her stuff. So, I hope that you will consider not only the financial part, but the whole image of the city and where we need to be to stay current with what's in America, what our kids want to do. Our kids want this, and it's not all about money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a note, I did make note of the questions, and when we get to that item, we can attempt to answer them. So, and that item, it will come up very quickly here, so don't leave if you want to hear the discussion. So, citizens' communication is still open, if anyone else would like to come forward? Name and address for the record and...
My name is Jewel Buchanan. I live at 201 Creeker Drive. And it's funny, this is so nerve-wracking. I know all of you, but it makes me so nervous to talk in front of you. I'm also here because, and oddly, I'm sitting beside the other lady that's here to talk about what I want to talk about. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you guys for allowing us to have this time, because I know that even though we vote for you to represent us, it's also nice for you to get to hear, you know, how we're feeling on things. And I'm so glad you have that clock up there. I was making some notes. I may say some things that she said, and I'm sorry if I double up, but otherwise, I'll wander off to who knows where. I emailed my representative and my at-large representative to let them know how I was feeling, but I wanted to say something in front of all of you because of how important I think curbside recycling is. Sorry. I know that at the current time, oil prices have caused the market for our plastics to fall, but we all know that oil is up and down and up and down. And just because, right now, we can't get a lot of money for things, that doesn't mean that's the way it's going to be. And like my predecessor said, it's not all about money. It's about the environment. It's about the example that we set for our children. We have been talking about this reduced recycle reuse since I started teaching and probably before that, 20 years ago. I have been recycling for years. Before I even moved to Victoria, I used to haul my things out to the Edna Transfer Station. When I moved here, I used to take them out to Hovar Street. So, I was so happy that we decided to get with the program and start recycling. I personally, and I, you know, I know I don't speak it for everybody, but I would rather pay the additional 20 bucks a year and recycle what I can, as opposed to getting rid of my green bin and having to pay another five bucks for an extra trash bin, because my green bin fills up at least as fast as my black bin. And I know that we can't recycle as many things, but we drank a lot of milk at my house. We washed a lot of clothes at my house. We have a lot of those big things that fill up the bin, and I know that they're lighter. But to me, I want to do every last bit that I can for my environment, for my planet, the economy. It's less of an impact to use old plastic than to use virgin plastic. Sorry, I'm just trying to watch the clock and stick on my list. But the additional black bin would be $5 a month, so that's $60. So, it's more expensive for us as people to not recycle. I have all kinds of other things that I want to say, but I do want to say kudos to Mr. Leesack. I love his radio commercials telling us, you know, how to protect the environment and what to recycle and what not to recycle. However, in the day and age that we're in, I typically listen to Pandora and Spotify in the car, so the radio ads don't get to everybody. So, I'm thinking, if you could send out a postcard, it's cheaper than mail, a little postcard that we can all stick on our refrigerator of the new things that we can and cannot recycle. I think our recycling will be less polluted by the number sixes or the glass bottles or whatever, so it'll be easier to sell what we have. And then finally, in listening to the last meeting on YouTube, I love listening to it. I heard some great comments. It might have been Mr. Halpaske, I'm not sure. Somebody was talking about the things that we pay for that we don't use, because Mr. Alvarez said something about, like, subscribing to recycling, which sounds like an interesting idea, but, you know, I pay for roads I don't drive on. I don't mind. I want our town to have great roads. I pay for limb pickup that I don't use. We go out to the land. My kids, you know, like to have the limbs out there. There are a lot of services that I don't pay for, that I don't use, that I pay for, because I think they're really important to our town, our community, our environment. I'd like for recycling to stay. I think it'll be a lot easier to build our program back up, even if we keep it at this, you know, lower level, pay an extra, you know, $1.50 or whatever a month to keep those green bins. So, in a nutshell, that was mainly my rationale for coming up here. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Okay. You don't have to look at the clock. I'll interrupt you if you go too long. Citizens' communication is still open? Has everybody had their say, or... Here we go. No rush.
Good evening. My name is Ambrosia Davis, and I live at 2703 East Poplar Avenue. It's my first council meeting. I'm a local business owner. My husband and I own At Your Service. We're a delivery and courier service. Had absolutely no intention of coming to speak tonight, and here I am. What I've really just felt led on my heart to share with you is, I applaud you for coming up with ideas. And I hear us saying over and over again, we really want to look at our image as a community, what we're showing our children, what we're, you know, what the, excuse me, what we're modeling, you know, as a culture. I found myself kind of in an unlikely position. Kim and I used to work together years and years ago, and when I started my courier business, my little gold Priuses all around Victoria, and I see these homeless folks everywhere. I see them everywhere. And my husband and I, when we talked about it, we prayed about it, our hearts were really moved with compassion. Well, how can we help? You know, we serve at the church. There's a lot of things that we do. But we were approached with Kim to pass out what we call blessing bags, and these are donations that come from private citizens and businesses, churches and so forth. They're little gallon-sized bags, and I carry many, many, many of them in my car. At my own cost, my business and expense, we've printed a half sheet of paper that we've laminated that has connections to different services here in Victoria, such as Midcoast and Christ Kitchen and the Food Bank and things like that. So, I'm actually kind of a little bit on the opposite. I am sort of panhandling in a different way. When I pull up along the median and I see somebody standing out there, I'm not there to judge why are they, who are they there? Are they a drug addict? They're, you know, it's none of my concern. That's not what Jesus called us to do, and I'm very, very passionate about that. He said, "What you've done for the least of these, you've also done for me." And that really resonates on my heart. We're a Christian community. I'm a registered voting Republican. I don't consider myself to be a bleeding heart, but I have compassion. And so, when I, you know, I roll down my window, "God bless you, sir. I wanted to let you know that I see you. God sees you. You matter, and here's some resources to help you be safe." And we're gone, you know. So, one of the things that I really would like to stir your heart, to really challenge you to, is instead of considering a lot of ordinances and things like this, how can we get the city to connect with these organizations, to bring the organizations to the front, connect the need with the needy, and hit this from a little bit different angle? As this other gentleman had mentioned a moment ago, this is a symptom. You know, when you go to the doctor, you have a symptom. "I've got sniffles. I've got allergies. I've got these things going on. What's wrong with me?" Well, it's not, again, it's not the panhandling that's a problem. That's a symptom. So, I think we need to step up as a community, and we're doing our part at your service to just meet basic dignities. There's granola bars and shampoos and bars of soap and whatnot, but we have a bigger issue here that we're really not focusing on. We're just focusing on, you know, wiping our nose with a Kleenex to cover the symptom. We really need to look at what's the root problem. Why are these guys out there in the first place? You know, what's going on here? And how can we stop it at its root? And I think that's where the leadership with the council really needs to kind of step in and brainstorm with the community to connect these services. If it's a matter of addiction, how can we get them connected with, you know, Gulf Bend or Billy Catan or whatever? If it's a matter of they can't get a job because they don't have an ID or a social security card or birth certificate, who can we connect these people to? Because ultimately, we want them, a long-term and sustainable solution. So, that's really where my concern is. And again, it's not, you know, this bleeding heart kind of thing. It's looking at the bigger picture here, because we've been talking about things over the past few months about camping and panhandling and these other kinds of things, which, again, are symptomatic of a bigger problem. And so, like I said, that's what I really want to invite us to do, to really challenge all of us to do, is to come up with sustainable, long-term solutions to connect the need with the needy and really reach these people and just be the hands and feet of Christ and really show these people the heart of Victoria, the moral and ethical standards of Victoria, and show Texas, show the community, show the country, you know, that we're willing to step up and find real viable solutions to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Citizens' communication still open? I see no one getting up. Everybody did a really good job of speaking, by the way, tonight. We appreciate it. We'll go ahead and close citizens' communication and move into our ordinances.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You asked if there was anything else from council, and I had something, but I couldn't remember it. I'd just like to thank staff and point out that the median has now been put at the Stockbauer intersection of the hike and bike trail, and it looks really good. And there was a lot of construction stuff, so that as traffic was going by, we could see that something was happening. But I just want to thank everyone for getting that accomplished.
Thank you. I looked at that the other day. It's a tremendous improvement. Very good, very good. Thank you. No, we'll just go forward. C-1.
C-1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of territory consisting of approximately 54.23 acres of land, adopting a service plan for the territories to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed?
Aye.
One opposition. Okay. C-2.
Item C-2 is an ordinance designating as a reinvestment zone the real property and structures to be located on a combined 8.29 acres located on Loop 463 and Salem Road, establishing the boundaries and other matters relating thereto, determining that the city of Victoria intends to enter into an agreement for tax abatement with Stimson &amp; Sons Incorporated, doing business as Ashley Home Store, Victoria, and BPEC Enterprises LLC, doing business as Ashley Home Store Corpus Christi, providing for severability and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there questions? I know this is our second, third reading, so we've had a discussion already. Mr. Fowler, did you have anything to add?
Only to recognize Mr. Ben Strife, who's here with us with Ashley Furniture. He was here last time, and I forgot to recognize him, so I just wanted you all to know that he's here and present and interested in your decision.
Okay. I know we're excited to see what you guys are doing, so thank you for your investment in Victoria. Counsel, is there any discussion or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for waiting through our citizens' communication. Okay, C-3.
Item C-3 is an ordinance amending the Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees to increase environmental service curbside recycling fees from $1.28 per home per month to $2.92 per home per month, beginning March 1, 2016, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Discussion?
One item. There's a section after the now there for item two, the March 1. Do we need to change that to March 15, or if it passes, or is that going to matter?
At the end of the ordinance, it says that it'll become effective 10 days after final passage. And so, I don't know that we need a formal amendment to that. If you'd like to, for the purpose of clarification, we certainly could do that.
I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention if that was necessary or not.
Right. We don't change things typically on the second or third reading of an ordinance, and so, since time has now passed, that date does look outdated.
But it's not necessary to change at this point?
No, sir. Well, the ordinance itself won't be effective until 10 days after final passage.
Okay.
In other words, we're not retroacting?
Right, right. March 1, yeah.
That was my point, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point clarification. What was her name? I think it was Ms. Jones. I don't remember. One of the ladies mentioned that our garbage fee would go up. If you don't need another can, it's not going to go up, is it?
We will have to evaluate. If we stop the recycling program, we will have to evaluate the household garbage collection based on, you know, the amount of trash that's going and routes and stuff. So, I can't say that it wouldn't go up, but we will have to look at that and bring it back during the budget process.
That's if we ended the recycling.
If you end the recycling program, that's correct. And also, just for clarification, that's the city and not Waste Management to do residential. Not for you, Ms. Lees. That was one of the questions.
No, no, I understand.
I wanted to, and I kind of wrote those questions, but I didn't get specific out of it, other than the garbage fees that she brought up.
The other was something to do with who approved the contract without unrestricted fees.
That, yeah, I wanted to, and this is my opinion, you know, there was a comment about dropping the ball. I would disagree with that respectively. That was a very, I've also heard that we need to study this. This has been, council was told about this last October. That's how long y'all worked on that contract.
Yes, sir.
And I would, I think it's safe to say, nobody on staff wanted this to go up, and I know we don't like raising fees. Waste Management, you know, I think... Waste Management, you know, I think they've acted in good faith with us. They have to make money, or they're not going to do it. I mean, this is a zero-sum game here. We just need to recover enough costs, and it's within the rights of their contract. And then this specific contract, even if suddenly these commodities go up in value tenfold, we can get money back. That's built into the contract. So this has been extremely studied, you would agree.
Yes, sir.
You used to work for Waste Management.
At one point.
And I think that helps us. You have knowledge of their operation to some extent. And Mr. Franks is here, I believe, from Waste Management.
Yes, sir.
This has been thought out over and over and over, and you negotiated on our behalf and the citizens' behalf the best you could. I believe that.
No, I agree with you.
So I just want to clarify that. So the focus, I don't think, is necessarily to be on Waste Management. I would just, you know, from a citizen's perspective. If you want to be mad at anybody, you can be mad at me. That's okay, or you're a council member.
And we've said this before, and it's worth repeating, this is not a Victoria, Texas issue. This is an issue globally, but it's also an issue throughout the United States, because it's a commodity market and cities are struggling with recycling programs. And y'all's charge to us back in October was to negotiate a contract to try to keep a program, and that's, you know, kind of what we did. It is what we did. It's not kind of what we did. It is what we did.
And over the last couple of months, I'd nudge Mr. Lisak, and "How's it going?", you know, and "You did the best you could, and I appreciate Waste Management. Y'all negotiated this out," and to where we keep the program going, as the city manager said. I don't know what the future holds, if it gets to, there's going to be a threshold where the cost may no longer be worth it to whoever seven people are sitting up here. Y'all would agree.
And there could be a threshold where the markets get down far enough that we just can't continue to do it. So you've got to look at that as well.
True.
But that would also be true across the whole United States. In some respects, we're a victim of our own success, just as an Eagle Ford shell is a victim of its own success. A glut of oil brings the price down. We're not the only city recycling. All cities all across the United States are.
There's so much material now that's, yeah.
But on the flip side, if the commodity market does improve, then maybe we can add some of the items back that we right now are restricted on, so.
Yeah.
And we'll be watching that.
I do think geography plays a little bit of a role, though, as well.
Oh, yeah.
You're in New York City, and you don't have much space. There's a very difference between being here in Victoria, Texas.
Valid point. Mr. Alvarez?
Well, also, we entered into a 10-year contract, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We're like five years into this.
Yes, sir.
And there was a particular language that allowed for both parties to renegotiate this contract.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I'm not being critical at all of the contract, where we're at, but my point has been, well, you know, we do have an option, you know, to go, to increase the rates, or to not, you know, to abandon the program. And it's based on the economics and some of the other things that were discussed about what's all going into the landfill. Does this bottle go, where does this bottle go?
Into recycling.
Into recycling. So this is considered a one or two?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm still confused. You know, the threes, the sevens.
Well, we've kind of held off on getting really into everything with the public until we get approval to move forward.
And then, of course, the other piece of it was the glass, so we can, we can almost, it's safe to assume that the glass is the bulk of the weight?
Yes, sir.
And where is that going?
That will, in the future, be going to the landfill if this passes.
Going into the landfill. So, you know, we may feel good about what we're doing, but ultimately, the realities don't necessarily true up to what is really going forward with raising this fee or this rate. So I would hope still that as we proceed, regardless of how the vote goes, that we look at this harder throughout the summer and into the budget, to study all the other potential options, and at the minimum, at least come back with a set of criteria that's going to be a trigger that says, "We're out of the program," based on these things. After studying it some more, or whatever the professionals say on this matter, that we establish some criteria at one point that says, you know, "We've reached that breaking point," not just based on rate increases, but my, you know, I wish I could get an answer. How much really truly is now going to go into the landfill? Half, if we're saying 3,400 tons a year, is half of it now going into the landfill of that number?
I can't say.
We will be able to know.
We will be, yes, sir, after we, the program continues.
So at one point, when we pass 50% of what we thought we were recycling is going into landfill, or at 60% going into, I mean, what's the trigger point?
Six days out of 12, at 50%.
Well, I mean, from, I think there's seven trigger points up here, and it's how much, based upon our feedback from our constituents, what we're willing to ask them to pay for the service. I mean, that's it for me. If it gets to four, five, six, eight, I don't know. I might say, "No, this is done. Let's park the trucks and forget it." That's the trigger point there. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Housepass.
No, no, no one knows where the bottom is. Could it get worse? Can it get worse again? Can it get worse again? No one knows where the bottom is on that market, or more inversely, the top on the rate we have to charge. Is it next year, another dollar, $2, $3, $5? At what point do people put a price tag on their beliefs that this is saving the world?
Well, I just want, I think that we can believe that, but what is the reality if we're putting half or more into the landfill?
It needs to be a national debate. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's kind of my point.
Well, and just as a reminder, you know, on the first night that we voted and adopted the contract and voted for the first fee increase, y'all asked us to come back during the budget process with options. And so staff is working on numerous options with pros and cons, and so you will see that in those June work sessions, either on the 20th or 21st. I haven't decided which date yet, but one of those days, so you will see that. That's assuming it passes tonight.
Okay. My question is, you know, I'm going to vote against it only because of the increase, but I wanted to ask, when I was at one of the last Golden Crescent Planning Commission meetings, they said they had some funds for recycling. Have we applied for grants from them?
We are actually looking at a couple of grants now, or doing a grant now. They're due next month, but it's not particularly for the recycling part. Now, we have used money from them in the past to go towards recycling efforts. Yes, ma'am.
Is it just for educational purposes? The grant that they were talking about right now?
We will be, and I don't want to speak out yet, but...
We're applying for a grant for, what's the name of the little garbage gobbler? What is it?
They are solar compactors, actually, to use downtown to beautify the way downtown looks. So you put your trash in, and it's compacted, it works off solar energy.
Every four or five hours, it squishes it down.
Right. We will be receiving some money to go back and check on a grant that we started several years ago with a regional recycling program, and it's just a small amount of money just to check up on that program, make sure that the schools that we talk to are still in the program or out of the program.
Just me personally, going off the feedback from my constituents, which is everybody, most, the vast majority, 80%, want us to continue. So I'm, you know, like, again, I don't know what that threshold will be in the future, but there's a point where enough people say, "No." And I get that, I understand. It's never been profitable. I don't, well, I don't know. Maybe in the past, it was a short time where it was profitable, but it's subsidized. It's just like all those windmills you see out down there towards Corpus. That's all subsidized. They don't, they're not profitable, or they wouldn't be there. So the public, and that's a broad term, ask us to do things like this occasionally. And then we get stuck with that decision, you know? There's a balancing act to do with it, to continue it. So, anyway.
I was going to comment, I've gotten a fair number of emails, more than on some other topics, and the majority of them have said, "Continue the program." There have been some that have said, you know, "No, we don't want to," but the majority have said that they support the program.
Yeah. And I appreciate all that feedback. I really do.
I do believe that there needs to be some public education as to what the actual, the actual benefits of recycling are, how many days we're saving. People are very ignorant as to that.
I guess if you did, you can break it down and try to capture or quantify some of those costs, and, you know, it might be for a later session, maybe during budget time, if you want to, something, I don't know, staff could do.
And including alternate costs. If we don't put it here, we put it there. If we don't haul it here, we haul it there. What are those differences exactly? Is it better to haul it 10 miles to our dump than haul it 120 miles to Houston? The actual impact on the environment might be less if we haul it to the dump and put it back where it came from, the ground.
The industry's done that. I mean, you look on the internet, there's all kind of little studies about the cost to recycle. One can can light a light bulb for three hours or whatever. But I, one point I want to make real quick, again, it's very interesting to me, is many, many people are at that issue of maybe having a second, this was mentioned by speaker, a second can for their garbage. If you, let's say you ended the recycling tomorrow, and we took all those cans up, a large portion of those people would then have to pay $5 a month for a second garbage can. It's actually cheaper from that standpoint to pay $2.92 because it diverts to the recycling. You see what I'm saying? I think that, I don't know what the term is for that. It's kind of odd situation, but you could see a good percentage of people having to maybe do that.
And we do need to look at all these facets of it, the cost to the consumer, and also these environmental costs, to let everybody have a good, clear view of every facet. Each time you turn it, it's a different facet to look at.
Some, in the example I just gave, someone might just say, "Well, your $5 for a second can is too much," or something, you know? I don't know, maybe that, anyway.
Oh, but again, Mayor, I mean, you have that green can, but half, we're anticipating that quite a bit of that, that you're recycling, is going to still go to the landfill, so it's just like having a third can.
Perhaps.
At a lesser rate, actually. You're right.
Perhaps, yeah.
But perhaps, a lot of that you're putting in there is going to the landfill. That's, you know.
That's being put in the green can?
Yes, ma'am.
Is going to the landfill? I don't know.
Well, I mean, we say we have spolages of at least 20%. That goes, where does that go?
De-sampling.
Sure.
Yeah, if it's trash, it's trash.
But the point is, if, here's where it's going to get complicated, real fast. People are going to continue with old habits, put their glass, put all the threes, the sevens, any other things that they continue to put, where's that going to go?
What would you suggest?
We'll just cancel the program, is what I'm...
So you want to cancel the recycling program?
That's where I'm, where I'm standing, yes.
Okay, okay. I mean, I thought maybe you'd say education would help, too. You would agree with that.
Well, I mean, yes, but that's why I'm glad we're having this third vote, so we've done a lot of education, I hope, and people have spoken to me as well. Some have said, "Keep it," some have said, "Get rid of it." You know, I'm leaning and continue to support, let's stop the program, but...
Well, I think education does continue to be important, and the emails that I received, a lot of them, you know, they'll complain that, "Why can't we continue with glass?" Or, "We don't like having to sort our plastics as much, but we understand it." And, you know, people, as they begin to be educated about it, they say, "Okay, you know, hopefully someday you'll be able to take it, but for now, we understand."
On the education front, real quick, while we're on this topic, so we've done, you've done podcasts.
Yes, sir.
Channel 15. You've done some stuff.
We're holding on to some stuff until after we got the vote, but we've done all the radio stations.
Radio station.
Talking about plastic and glass. We've done the podcast. I've worked extensively with the Victoria Advocate on those types of things. And we did a morning show on the TV station.
Do you, what do y'all think about the stuff in the utility bill, UBO?
Okay.
Yeah? After you get everything sorted out, an up flyer to everybody who gets the utility bill? I think a postcard was mentioned, and I got to remember, there's 20,000 postcards, so I don't know what that costs, but there's a cost to it.
We've done mailouts in the past.
Just do the, okay. So continue the education. Assuming this passes, then do the best, okay. Very good. Any further discussion? We have a motion and second, right? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. You want, let's do hands, I'm sorry. Let's raise a right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Those opposed, same sign? Okay, 4-2. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. What's next? We have public hearing.
Two items for public hearings. The first is a resolution granting an annexation petition from DGMP Incorporated for approximately 5.7 acres of land, authorizing the city staff to prepare an ordinance for city council consideration and declaring an effective date.
Okay, so we have a public hearing on this item, so what we'll do, we'll open the public hearing, and anyone who wants to speak specifically to C4, please come forward now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on item C4, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we motion and second. Is there any discussion?
On the CM1, the planning commission will approve the final plaid on March 17, so after the fact. Is that strange or normal?
We just have to act on the petition within 30 days of receiving it. The fact that the planning commission hasn't acted on the final plaid is really...
So it's not cart before the horse, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. And C5?
C5 is a public hearing to receive citizen comments following a presentation on the final draft of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan by Kendi Keese Collaborative.
Okay, so this is just a public hearing, so let me do that first. Open the public hearing on...
We'd like to do the presentation first, if you don't mind.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
So the public can hear the presentation? Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Plan 2035, as you all know, will replace our current Victoria 2025 comprehensive plan. This new plan will provide council, planning commission, city management, and residents with a long-range guide for future growth of Victoria and its surrounding area. As you all know, much has been accomplished, and much has changed since the last plan was adopted, and so this new plan will establish a positive, sensible direction for the development of Victoria over the next 20 years. It is a roadmap. Without a map, you don't know where you're going to go, and you don't know how you're going to get there, so. The new plan is based on numerous meetings, surveys, and focus group sessions that were held by planning commission and the Conference of Plan Advisory Committee. As you've already stated, tonight is a public hearing only on the plan. We will present a resolution for adoption at your April 5 meeting. And with that, I'd like to introduce our plan consultant, Gary Mitchell, who's president of Kendi and Keese Collaborative, and he's going to give you a brief presentation on the overall plan.
Thank you, Jared, Mayor, council members. Very brief overview, just to bring everybody up to speed one more time before public comment. Very brief overview, just to bring everybody up to speed one more time before public comment. This may be my last opportunity to thank your departments and your staff, so I'd like to do that now, especially Development Services, of course, but John and Charmel, your enthusiasm from day one of this process is much appreciated for the comprehensive plan. As Jared said, a variety of public engagement activities, leadership, business community, your residents through various types of meetings, so that's been very productive and, for this process. Once again, the, the plan is an existing city section, which is more of the facts and figures about Victoria today, that was published just before the holidays, that is part of the plan, but our focus right now is really the future city portion, the aspirations for the years ahead, and once again, this covers land use development issues, transportation, parks and recreation, the growth and infrastructure issues ahead for the city, and also economic development. So those are the major pieces, and also, before I forget, I did want to mention from the joint workshop that we had recently, that we will be addressing some of the formatting, font size issues, some of those mechanics at the very end of the process when the content is set, so we will take care of those issues in the document. And the final section does deal with implementation, where you go from here as far as pursuing specific action items from this plan, and I did want to mention again that when a plan like this is adopted, it remains a guidance document for the city, authority for various types of actions remains with council as you go forward. Some of the information, the prioritizations that are in this document, I very much hope they change in the next few years, because that means you're using the document, revisiting it, based on how the city continues to change in the years ahead. Once again, how the document is organized, the future city portion, each section talks about some key issues and considerations for the years ahead, then it talks about, from a broad vision level down to more specific goals, and then a set of strategic action priorities. And we actually went back since the joint workshop and pulled out some of the key words from the plan, and hopefully, some of these ring true from things that you brought to us and that we heard through our public discussions. I can tell you from our work across the state and elsewhere in the country that every city's unique, but y'all are dealing with some very common issues that other cities are, and, and priorities of citizens. As you know well, it's needs first, infrastructure, streets, and wants, things that people would like to see, and just sorting through those priorities. And each section of the plan also discusses other actions that may come up in the years ahead, along with those strategic priorities, and some of these do carry over from the previous plan, ongoing items that are still on the agenda. One of the key assumptions behind the plan is the population projection for the years ahead. We looked at a range of scenarios, and the plan talks about being in the mid eighty thousand range several decades down the road, which we've said often is the equivalent of taking a third of your population today, adding that to the city, so that's the scope of what we're potentially looking at. There's a portion in the plan that talks about the implications of that on the ground in the growth and infrastructure section. So in each portion of the plan, there's a short list of items, as, as I mentioned, just as, as an example, in the land use section, one of the items is focusing on the appearance and image of the city. This is often where programs with your own departments, but also other partners, come up. In the mobility section, there is focus on, excuse me, just looking for that example, the bicycle pedestrian aspect, this is one of those issues that is very common to cities across the board today, in citizen interest in trails and safer sidewalk connections, so this is an area of the plan where it talks about a next level of planning, the potential for a sidewalk master plan in the city, and your ongoing transportation and park planning. In the growth and infrastructure section, this is typically where your capital improvement projects mostly flow from, so that's what this section focuses on especially. In the economic opportunity section, one of the themes here from day one has been maintaining your role as a regional trade center, whether that's medical, education, shopping, the furniture store example tonight, folks that will come a distance to buy furniture in a larger city for this region. And finally, in the recreation amenity section, one of the items here is the potential to look at a parkland dedication mechanism as new development happens, that is an example of a potential regulatory item tied to your subdivision regulations. So each of these sections has those types of action items. This table in your package is the new item since the joint workshop of roughly a month ago, and this gets into those fourteen, and I should say, there were thirteen at the joint workshop, now fourteen with the addition of the water supply item to this list, but then it talks about a potential sequencing of actions in the years ahead, which departments, which other partners outside the city would have a role in that. And this just splits out some of the details in that table as examples, some of the things that, between the informal voting exercise we did in the workshop, but then working with your staff, tried to lay out a sequence of actions, and that list on the, on the right is examples of things we consider ongoing that are already in process, but this plan reinforces. In the column of the who, who does what, these are some examples, it's good to see that those are fairly spread around, have some sympathy for Lynn and Colby that have more items perhaps than others, but it, it really spreads across various departments, and again, some of your partner agencies. And then looking at some items for several years down the road, and then some longer-term items. As I said, this is meant to be revisited annually through your, your plan status reports and updating of the plan. The planning commission recently made a unanimous recommendation to the council, so that's in the background. Your next step here is the public hearing tonight, and then this is tentatively scheduled to be considered at your next meeting. So I'll be here with Jared to help you with questions afterwards, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, did I open the public hearing?
No.
I did not, okay.
You tried.
You tried, that's right, I'm sorry. Long day already. So we'll open the public hearing for anyone here in the audience that would like to speak specifically to this plan, now's the time. And since we have had the other previous meetings, there's been plenty of opportunities for public input, so it doesn't surprise me necessarily that no one wants to speak to it tonight. We'll close the public hearing then, there's no decision point for council, no vote, but I don't want to stop, there's a few comments.
Well, if there's, yeah, if there's any comments or suggestions for change, if you have those time, it'd be a great time to do it, so we can bring back those changes on the fifth for adoption.
Is this the total and final document, or is it more in a book form like the twenty twenty?
It'll be, it'll be a book form like this, yes, sir.
Have that preliminary, yes.
Mr. Alvarez, you have some?
Well, we use the color maroon a lot in here, I was just wondering, is that a preference of color?
I.
You see some orange?
I have, I have a serious question, the city manager helped me answer a lot of those questions, because I literally went through every chapter and picked out, but I, I'll turn your attention to the table you just handed us, Gary. You, you refer to it as table one, but I guess you'll change that in your contents, because table one is population changes in the actual book itself, so you may want to call it table nine or eight, if you're going to stay in the sequence.
Once we know all the content is set, we need to make all that number inconsistent.
I really appreciate this, I think this is what I was alluding to at the last meeting, that kind of helps, but there are some areas, and I don't know if anybody else is going to have questions, but I certainly still want to address some things.
Now's the time, or if you want to.
Well, I'll pick on a few, and I, I won't, I won't belabor a lot of them, because there are some here that our city manager is, in response to me, said it would take, you know, some consensus from council. For example, page twenty-one, and this is in the, the future city, there's, there's a lot of discussion about to consider formalizing the complete streets. I don't know if y'all have dwelled in that, but that's pretty expansive in, in its proposal, something I certainly can't agree to, but to me, again, it's only going to apply to maybe new development or new growth, because I don't know if we can go back on any of our rehab and any of our old Victoria and other.
Well, I think if there's an opportunity to look at it on rehab, then if, you know, if council wishes, then we would do that.
We're, we're doing some of that, in fact, I know that hadn't been approved yet, but the Ben Wilson, U H V Ben Wilson quarter actually implements a few of those. Complete street doesn't mean that you literally take that entire laundry list of items, it means an attempt to try to incorporate more pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly elements into our roadway design, and the Ben Wilson project as presented definitely, I would consider that as something that is, that is.
Example.
An example of a complete street.
Moving, obviously with a lot of planning and certain work and so forth.
Well, and even our, it's still in design, but the Plaza Benavides extension is, I guess, planned, I guess I can say that, to include a multi-use hiking bike path with it, so we're, we're doing some of that already.
Okay.
Mr. Alves, ask him.
Yes, this is true on any plan, ultimately, it still comes down to a vote of city council, if we're going to pave this road, or fix this, or do hiking bike trail, we ultimately have to vote on that regardless of what's in the plan, but the plan is a guidepost or guideline, and these are things that people would like to see done, would like to have happen. It's up to us to see if we can make it happen under the budgetary restraints we're working with.
Yeah, it's not, this isn't policy.
Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't.
Yeah, I.
Sometimes we can't do it right now.
I looked at this complete, I mean, it's not policy, but, yeah.
Well, it's a con, it's a concept, and if it stays in the plan, then when we have the opportunities, we will look at this concept and bring forth to you guys during the development of infrastructure.
Well, I was pushing for additional off-channel storage in ASR, which of course is in the plan, and the answer was not now, let's do this instead. Does it mean that we don't need that in the future, and that it will eventually need to have happen? But it's still in the plan, still on the list.
And, and one of the reasons I suggested Mr. Alvarez bring it up is if it's a consensus of council, you don't want to leave it in the plan, tonight's a good time to tell us that, or tell us on the fifth, so.
Is there any other?
We addressed the recycling, but again, I think that the plan talks about continuing recycling, and other alternatives, and my thought was, well, to include an alternative that cancels the program too, but that may have to work its way through.
Well, yes, sir.
I'm very disappointed in page fifty-two, and this is in the new city. I had hoped that there, given all the talk we had in recent months, and even last year about a tourist center, there was no mention, I guess no one brought that idea or thought into any of the discussions, that we at least put something in there to talk about tourist center in the future, if we're talking about a plan.
That could be a target of opportunity that we engage when we see it. Doesn't mean it's, it can't happen just because it's not on the list as well.
I would agree, I mean, you know, because, for example, the parks building we're going to build was not in our plan, I don't think, right?
Some things come up without us, I know, but we've been talking about tourist center a long time, but, I mean, it's time to either say we're interested in it, or I guess we're not.
I think as, in my role, listening to the different constituencies, it's the definition of tourist center that's going to matter, what that is, and there was not the most enthusiasm with your advisory committee for the comprehensive plan, depending on what that definition is, and just location, cost implications, things like that.
Mm-hmm. But there's nothing in this plan that prevents the council from doing that?
No. Just because it's not mentioned in the plan does not mean it could not be done.
Yeah. It's good to bring up, though, is there, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to rush. Mr. Alvarez, is there any other items?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay. Well, bring them up to staff, and hopefully, the sooner the better.
Well, now, I'll go back to my question, is there consensus to add that somewhere in the wording of the plan?
For what?
The tourist center that you brought up.
Yeah.
I think it's okay, me.
To add it?
No, no, I'll just leave it the way it is.
Okay, I'm not getting a sense that there's consensus to change, okay.
I don't see it. Okay. Any council, did y'all have any further discussion on it? This is just a public hearing, then that concludes that item, we'll move on in our agenda. I'm not cutting anybody off, right? Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a consent agenda, but we're going to pull D three.
Right.
Do the consent first, and then we'll do D three.
So there are five items remaining on the consent agenda, they are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March first, twenty sixteen, second, the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary with UniFirst Corporation to provide rental uniforms for designated personnel in various city departments in an estimated amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty sixteen and declaring an effective date. Item D four is a resolution authorizing the purchase of new building access control system from Datavox Incorporated in the amount of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty cents, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. D five is a resolution awarding the twenty fifteen sixteen sanitary sewer line cleaning project to National Works Incorporated for their low bid of ninety-two thousand ten dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And D six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award the annual supply contract for limestone base to C Max Incorporated in the amount of twenty-two sixty-three per ton, for a total of approximately a hundred and eighty-one thousand forty dollars, based on an estimated quantity of eight thousand tons, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we'll do D three.
D three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Datavox Incorporated for the purchase, project manu, management, installation of an audiovisual upgrade for council chambers in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents, and declaring an effective date.
Let's get a motion first.
Move to adopt, D three.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and discussion.
Well, I asked this to be pulled so that we could talk about it and get a little more understanding about what we're talking about, and I'm just kind of looking at the area, and I'll let you explain a little bit more what you're proposing, but I'm looking at where I'm spread out, and where we're talking about things being mounted, and microphones being mounted, and so forth.
Just for the public, just to clarify, this is to, this money will be to do upgrades to the desk up here for us, and place monitors, and I just want to put, some people may not be aware of that.
Yes, thank you.
No, that's okay.
With PEG funds that are not property tax.
Yeah, these.
Or sales tax.
These are, that's the monies from, that the cable company pays as part of their franchise fees.
Suddenly.
Suddenly, it is not, again, that's what we're saying twice, it's not property or sales tax.
It can only be used.
It can only be used for equipment, so.
Capital equipment.
So you have, like, you're going to put, improve communication for citizens with some monitors and.
So, yes, obviously, some of the things that we've had before, it's just the projectors here, which are some low resolution, and everyone has sort of struggled to see when something is, is being presented up there, so the intent is, is that we will actually replace out the projectors, go with two higher-deep projectors that are capable of doing high-def resolution, face them more towards the audience, and this would be more for the, the front with the Andrew and John, and, and with OC along in here. The council itself, on the days itself, each one would, each seat would have a twenty-inch monitor that is very similar to what I placed in front of council members Scott and Bocknight's seat, is a monitor where it would sort of tilt at an angle, and then what this would be, be done is for, just for presentations of what's being presented either on the, on the projectors, and it can also be multiple displays, so we can do different presentations, so if you wanted to see something on the, on the days that you would not want to necessarily see on the projectors, you can sort of do it from that part on there. And then on top of that, we're also going to be bringing back along, somewhere along in here, two fifty-five inch monitors that will be mounted on the wall, and this would help with the audience, that they could actually view that a little bit more visible there. And then the audio system is also, when we were looking at this, part of the system is capable of changing out for the audio, and that's one of the things that the audio system has been in place for a while, it's not, is a analog, it's not a true digital, and so the intent of this was one of the things, was we could go ahead and get this done while we had these individuals here to change that out.
I have two things, I'm glad it got pulled, actually. I don't know if there's any benefit, one is minor, the, the video feed that ends up on channel fifteen, during the times, there's nothing to put up there, I wonder if it, the audience could see the speaker from the front, I don't know if that's of any value, that may complicate things drastically, though. In other words, whatever the camera's on is up there.
Yes, if, if.
Because people could look up there to see the front of the person speaking, and I, again, if there's no value to that, and it's hard, don't worry about it.
Are you talking about on the screen?
Yes. I, I do know that when we're doing a PowerPoint, it's going to go up there, but the other ninety percent of the time, there'll be nothing.
That's correct, you're just seeing what, what's currently up there right now.
Add the camera feed.
Oh, no, you don't.
So then, but that might be bad, because we might be on, up there, we don't want to, I don't know, just a thought, think about it. The second one is more serious to me, when I first got on council, Mr. Alves was also there, we did have a small fourteen-inch monitor here, it was behind the microphone, this just doesn't work, the more I think about it, I remember how difficult, because we would kind of like do like this, having this in the field of vision is a problem, and if you have, I don't think it was included in this item, but I would move these microphones to the side, because we can bend this this way. That's a big thing to ask for, because I guess you're modifying this desk considerably, but if you put them, and I do not believe, maybe other council members disagree, putting the monitor to the side may not be a good idea. I like it in front of us, but I would just say, go ahead and move the microphones.
Just on top of the monitor?
The side of it, or something, perhaps, I don't, yeah, just put a piece of tape over the hole, I don't care.
Will we look at, will we look at that?
Okay.
No, it, it is, it's true.
That's why I've been fussing with my, my, I have a bunch of stuff up here, and I'm putting it over there, well, now I'm bumping into, you know, the next spot, so.
I can take up a small space.
Well, I'm, I'm over here, too.
Well, I, I would imagine if this was redesigned, it would be much more generous space-wise, but, yeah, I don't want to be frivolous with the funds, but there are funds there, and we can't use them for anything else, can't fix a pothole with them. Did I say that, I need to say that again, we can't fix streets with the money, although there's not enough there to matter, so.
Call it a PEG fund, what, what does that mean?
Public, it's public, public education.
Public ed, uh-oh, OC's going to.
Well, just officially, what a PEG fund is, it's a fee that Suddenly pays the city to use our, there are rights of ways to put their programming across to their customers, and that includes communications, video services, and even telephone services, and currently, P E G is public education and government channels are, collect an extra one percent that's dedicated towards basically capital costs for these television channels.
Can this replace the local franchise fees?
Yes, it do.
Yes.
From the cable, just to clarify that.
That's correct, local cable company pays that, and with these expenditures. And with these expenditures, we get about $180,000 a year into this fund. With all these expenditures, plus what we have budgeted in this year's fiscal year, we're expecting to end the fiscal year with about 200, was it 290,000? I'm sorry, I believe it's going to be $290,000 at the end of the fiscal year will be our, our reserve fund balance in that.
Very good.
After this expenditure, OC?
Yes. And with everything else that's in the budget for this fiscal year. We do have some, some smaller pieces of equipment that were budgeted, we just haven't had a chance to buy them yet.
And we're looking at, can we do some upgrades in room 205 at 700 Main, for the 17 budget, to possibly be able to televise any meetings in that area? But that's something OC and them are working on now.
Yeah. We are looking at, at kind of a miniature version of this room, something that would still allow the room to be flexible, set up in different ways. But at the same time, we have space for an audio/video closet in there. We're trying to bring a company in the next month, before we get to the official budget presentation, to see really what kind of numbers we're talking about.
And those funds, they're ours to keep, we don't have to give anything back?
That's correct, yes.
It's restricted on that use?
Restricted on the use.
It's restricted?
Yes.
Is there any attempt to change the legislation?
There's been massive attempts to change the legisla, it's a part of the Federal Communications Act that was passed back in 19, in the 1980s, yes.
Does that matter? You just give up immediately?
Almost.
You hate to think that you're, you're, you're not spending, I mean, you're spending the money on what you need for capital items, but that, that pool of money's going to keep growing more and more. You don't want, you won't be able to spend it fast enough, because you won't find enough needs for it.
Right.
If we could use it for payroll, that'd be great, for that.
For some operating in that department would be nice, yes.
Maybe it'll change.
I know OC's State Professional Group looked at what they could do to try to get this changed.
Right.
Good.
We.
I would like to point out, I've had several people, you know, comment on sometimes the poor sound quality sitting out there. It's difficult to hear what we're saying. And I've attended several VISD meetings over the years, and they do have a little better sound system. Perhaps we should look at what they're doing that we're not doing, or maybe they have some point.
We've been having some audio problems, particularly lately with the sound system. And this sound system was in here before we even started the television channel. Give you a little bit of age.
It hadn't been improved with age.
Yeah.
But they have some different types of speakers and things that they use. You know, I was kind of hoping our sound system would heal itself, but it doesn't look like it's going to.
It hasn't done that. And, and we actually were budgeting for the audio equipment upgrade, really, in 2017, but looking at the people that were coming in to do this install on the projection equipment. And we had some money actually budgeted for, for even possibly doing the audio system this year, but it's coming in higher with the projection equipment and everything else. So James thought that we'd be able to come and present council with the project to do both at the same time.
Good.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, any further input or discussions? If you have a brainstorm later, call the city manager. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. The next item, E one, as we move into resolutions, we need to have a very brief executive session about. What I propose, instead of making everybody leave, all of us go in the hallway here. That meeting room's no longer back there, but we can stand in that hall, because it's very brief, and the information can be shared with us. And we'll come back out, and then we can vote on this.
That's right.
Because the vote needs to be public. Just remember that that's to protect the bargaining interest of the cities, why this information is executive session, executive session material. You want to go?
Sure. The city council will recess briefly into executive session now at 6:58 PM under Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests due to the fact that the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party.
Okay, so don't leave, we'll be right back. We just need to go in there and talk about this, come right after. Yeah, okay. He usually reads that. Okay, so we're reconvening back into regular session, and.
Mayor, on item E one, I'd like to read a substituted caption that provides a little more detail than what was in the packet. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to transfer approximately 6.109 acres of real property located at 8505 North Navarro, and also known as Navarro del Norte, to CNO Acquisitions LLC for the purchase price of $1.2 million, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Come on.
Motion and second, is there any discussion at all? I will just say that the expectation is the purchaser will be building retail, from what we understand. I know that question comes up occasionally, so, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. Thank you. E two?
E two is a resolution granting a waiver to Section 6-7 of the Victoria City Code that prohibits any person to be on the grounds of a cemetery at night for a charity dinner to be auctioned by Victoria Preservation Incorporated, and declaring an effective date.
Some move?
Bring a motion and second. Yeah, for those of you who may not realize it, City Code, you're not allowed to be in a cemetery after, between dawn and dusk. Did I get that right? And of course, that's not generally, people have held events in historical related. Dusk and dawn, excuse me, I had that reversed. People have held events related to historical aspects, and it's not something that we have enforced. This is a courtesy asking permission, and I believe the city manager has indicated this is one of those items in our ordinances we'll clean up later.
Working on it.
Because there are people that tend to frequent them after.
The ghost tours they have every year.
Right, right.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've never heard of them having to ask for permission. I was like, what?
Well, I knew it was in the ordinance, I always personally chuckled about it. No one seemed to be, you know, so anyway.
Well, Mr. Wright is doing what's appropriate. He is sinking permission, and so, and that's why there's a resolution on there, so.
We'll probably, again, change that rule soon, so you don't have to do that. But thank you for your courtesy. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E three is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-82A1 of the Victoria City Code, related subdivision and development, which requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 feet for property located at 18 Levis, excuse me, 810 Levis Road, Levi Road, in the Thomas Kano subdivision owned by Thomas Kano Jr., and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion and second, I apologize, Mr. Gush, I didn't mean to, I think you had it right, the pronunciation.
With a name like Gush, I should get used to pronouncing things right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion in council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, that item passes.
Item E four is a resolution awarding the 2015-16 rehabilitation overlay project to Brandon Paving Company Limited for their low bid of $3,715,272, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and there's a number of projects in there. That's good. Is there any particular discussion or anything? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign, okay, that passes. City manager reports.
First one is for an appointment on board of adjustments and appeals. And Ms. Wilbota, I believe, has placed an application.
Yes.
So, this is a position that requires somebody from the mechanical trade. So the other two listed wish to be reappointed.
So the question before is, is we not to consider this person to go ahead and put it in for the resolution?
I know this gentleman, he'd make a good addition. He's knowledgeable.
Does he fit the, the mechanical trade requirement?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I've checked with Rick Madrid.
Is he here? Not here?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to tell him thanks for applying, so I appreciate that. Do y'all want to go ahead and use this name then, on the resolution, bring it back? Okay, I'm fine with this gentleman. Okay, very good. Okay, air quality report?
Yes, I believe several weeks ago, was it Ms. Solis that asked for a report? So Kate will do a report on our air quality program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to introduce an important member of the department. Brianna Plunkett is our education specialist, and is responsible in large part for the implementation of our tasks included in the proposal for grant activities. I would like to present a brief report on the grant we receive every two years from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, or the TCEQ, which funds the air quality division of the Environmental Services Department. Firstly, the grant does not require matching funds. It is given to certain areas in Texas to monitor air pollution. In Victoria, we only monitor for ground level ozone. In short, the work outlined in the contract between TCEQ and the City of Victoria culminates into a single number called a design value. The design value is a numerical indicator of the ozone levels in an area at any given time. It is calculated by averaging the fourth highest daily maximum eight-hour concentration over a three-year period. This number corresponds to a scale issued by the EPA to determine whether or not an area is within attainment, or does not exceed the threshold of the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, or NOx for short. The NOx is currently at 70 parts per million. The main purpose of this grant is to remain in attainment of the NOx through various local control strategies and research. We, along with the University of Texas at Austin, monitor ozone levels. The main monitor is constantly taking air samples, measuring wind speed and direction, and other atmospheric conditions, and that data gets reported to TCEQ on an hourly basis all year long. This data is translated into the design value for Victoria. The data is collected, is also used to formulate and implement local control strategies. These can include recommendation, recommended activities such as stopping at the click while refueling, combining errands into a single trip, carpooling, and mowing the lawn outside of the peak hours of, peak ozone hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and during the ozone season, which is May through October. Models are run throughout the year, which indicate the failures or success of the suggested control strategies, local control strategies. Many different variables factor into the design value. Some variables include the presence of ozone precursors. The major precursors include volatile organic compounds, also referred to as VOCs, and nitrogen oxides, also referred to as NOx, not to be confused with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. These precursors come from sources including automobiles, machines that operate from combustion engines, and noxious substances like fuel or pesticides. The frequency of the use of each of such sources, as well as the time of day they are used, can also affect the design value. Climatic conditions such as wind speed, wind direction, the presence of sunlight, and the time of season can also affect the design value. These climatic conditions drive transport. Transport is defined as ground level ozone that is transported into Victoria by wind conditions. I've plotted the design values over the last 16 years. From the years 2000 to 2008, the National Ambient Air Quality Standard was 80 parts per million. In March of 2008, the standard was lowered to 75 parts per million. As of October 2015, the NOx is now 70 parts per million. According to the graph, we have only exceeded, once exceeded the National Ambient Air Quality Standard in the past 16 years. As it stands today, we are well below the 70 parts per million National Ambient Air Quality Standard. However, we must remain diligent, as the NOx must be reviewed every five years by the EPA in accordance with the Clean Air Act. This gradual decrease in Victoria's design value can be attributed to climatic conditions, economic variables, and improved technology. However, the major factor driving that down, that value down, is the public adopting local control strategies. We are primed to begin this year's ozone season in May with the lowest design value since 2000. Now, I'd be happy to address any questions.
I want to thank you for providing us with this information, because since we've been doing the grant, I always wondered, okay, are we doing okay? Are we doing okay? And this really is wonderful.
Thank you, I'd like to thank you for requesting it. I very rarely get to talk about it.
I agree, I'm glad you requested.
I really did follow everything, but would you go all the way back to the beginning and define design value again?
The design value, it's a numerical value assigned to various areas. Not all areas in Texas have the monitors, but we are one of those areas required to. And so daily samples are taken, and that's translated into numbers by, you know, wind speed, direction, and all that kind of thing. It's, it's basically the, it's the fourth highest value every, it's the fourth, fourth highest value of the year for a three-year average. It's, it's a really big, like, it fills a whole slide when TCEQ shows it to you, but, if that helps any.
I've heard that before, I didn't know it was called design value.
Yes, ma'am.
Not that I understood how it fit together, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I know what you're talking about.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Because this is very important to, that we remain a, we don't become a non-attainment area, because that will drive the costs from fuel to all kind of other requirements, and economic development, and has detrimental effects towards that.
Yes, sir.
I would think another measure is, you know, are more people suffering from asthma and respiratory issues, or not? Have we seen decreases in that? I don't know if that's a possibility. And I think the other thing is the threat that EPA is going to lower, or lower the number threshold even more from 70 to, I forget what number they're tossing around, which.
65, aren't they?
Yeah, every year, every five years or so, they're required to go back and review it.
So we have to really remain diligent and ahead of this on an annual basis, I think, so.
Well, and one point, too, and we've talked about this before, is we don't always create all of our bad air. It comes into us.
A lot of it blows in from Newbury, Houston, and other places. But we still have to own up to it, it's our air, so we don't have a choice. Where it comes from.
Some of it's created, and some of it's brought in. So we have to, you know, like Mr. Alvarez said, we have to account for what we create here as well, to combat what's brought in.
Well, I mean, you need to give yourself some credit. You didn't say anything about you and Darrell's commercials, which are great, very entertaining.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, that one about stop at the click, that worked with me. I was always one of those that went to the next few pennies on the pump. And when I would hear what y'all, I would think, gosh, what's the big deal? Stop at the click, I do that now. I don't care what it says, how many, if it's $22.31, I stop. And I don't pump anymore. So, I don't know, if that's truly, over the thousands of times that occurs every day. I mean, it worked on me, so thank you for that.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Real quick, the money for all of this comes from?
Grant.
Grant?
A grant, yes.
Okay, again, I just want to make that real clear. I think you are doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No further questions there? Where are we?
Executive session.
Okay, so this does conclude our regular meeting, and we're going to adjourn into executive se, what are y'all laughing at? Executive session, we'll go into City Hall office for that. Thank you.
City council will recess now for executive session on the 15th day of March at 7:20 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests